Right, it's uh June twenty six, twenty twenty three, we're calling to uh the Airway Heights Police Commission meeting at six o'clock in the dark. Myself, Mark Collins presents uh Commissioner Campbell.
Hi, President.
Commissioner Rachel.
Present.
Commissioner Doug.
Present.
And Commissioner Davis is on excuse absence at this time. Do you have any beliefs? There's one. The beliefs to see the light of the United States of America, material of our existence, our nation, our under God, invincible, with the change of justice. Before we go any further, um let me introduce Brenda, she's uh one of the candidates for the information right now, so she's just gonna sit in and see how we conduct this and uh. Anybody has any comments or questions, we'll do that in the meeting. Can I get a um notion to approve the agenda?
I'm gonna answer John down uh second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Last um we get approval of last meeting in minutes. Is the due uh move to approve the minutes from June twenty eighth? All those in favor?
I.
We should pass. We'll go to, we don't have public comments today, do we?
No, and we have no.
Okay, um presentations were good, so we're gonna move on to our public hearing, the indoor and subcoration amendments to. Our H two's code seventeen point zero five, please four three zero, we have to use for both seventeen three ten, please your course. Do you want to? Uh my bad, but you're good. Alright, all comments by proponents and opponents and other members of the public shall be made from the podium. Um in the absence of our podium, it'll be on Zoom. Any individuals making comments, so first give their name and address, this is required because an official recording of the public hearings being made. No comments shall be made from any of the locations. So presume anyone making out of our comments shall be subject to removal from the meeting, a person is physically challenged and requires a combination, its chair shall be pressed. There shall be no demonstration, applause, or other audience participation during or at the conclusion of a man's presentation. These rules are intended to promote orderly system of holding a public hearing, giving every person an opportunity to be heard, to ensure that when an individual is annoyed or embarrassed by exerting some physical or right of speech.
Yeah, alright. Let's go to the sale. Uh so today we're reviewing ordinance C dash one zero zero five, uh that provides amendments to every high school, seventeen point oh five with three oh and seventeen ten oh four oh. Uh this has to do with the allowing of indoor uh as a primary use of many storage facilities within the C two, which is our uh commercial zone. So the proposal actually removes indoor and mini storage from the allowed use and conditional uses matrices within the city hybrid quarter zone. Uh it allows for proposed use of staff higher looking for a meeting with purpose and intent in the C two hybrid order zone, uh the I one line industrial zone, the I two heavy industrial zone, as well as the. So this is what it actually looks like uh under every high school with seventeen point oh five oh three oh um. This is a very small section of very larger case of code, this is what the actual code looks like. So when we get phone calls um from people essentially like, hey, can I do this at my property, this is what we referenced to say yesterday. So hypothetically, if somebody wanted to do the scene up, I go, well, can you, is it presidential, well, this is seen on permitted, that's. So the air, the section we're looking at are these three things, which is recreational vehicle sales, sorry to the. So recreational vehicle sales, we actually have a category that plus recreation vehicle sales or storage lot. Um we're moving the or stores lots sections, so it probably retains for recreation is so, so you can still maintain sales lot, you can't have it as a storage lot, this is then actually pointing attention. Um in the past two years, so the funny now, uh the next is storage indoors, so C chapter seventeen point two five, that's our storage section, which provides this very good relationship for the zone. Uh for storage, so we're changing that from a P to be permitted, so again, she's not. And then self-service storage facilities, again, C two uh P permitted and those are exactly where our needs. So that's the oh five oh three oh section, uh in our commercial zones, we actually have a separate uh use category matrix. So again, when we're looking at uses, we actually have. A second section here. That provides essentially the same thing, but a little more updated, and it also provides integration with our J L S voice. So it's a little easier to work on, say, if we have a boost that most of our commercials on the top of it is actually located within the sound contour, so we do have to reference these two tables. Uh this tries to get down. So in this case. We are looking at the use self-storage in warehouse, and it was just going to C two conditionally permitted, so when we created an end this um. New zone news table, it was allowed conditionally within the C two, so we're taking it from the conditionally allowed means we require a conditionally use permit. Which is just a second step, so if we need to provide for additional levels of conformity, uh since it's not exactly what we're looking for within the zone. Say, well, it's the next door to like a house, we want to pass mixture land, see it in the stream that that's. Uh so we're going from a C, which is conditionally allowed to know, which is not about. The public participation process for this particular project started uh on June fourteenth, when we had our initial workshop where we introduced this to you guys. Uh the every time we make amendments to our developmental code, we're required to provide sixty day notice to the Washington State Department of Commerce, uh that went out in June twentieth. Um we're also required to make a CBA determination, uh CBA is the State Environmental Policy Act, it's essentially. A review of potential environmental impacts that any particular project or action might have. In this case, typically, we run two different comment periods, we'll reach out for initial comments, we'll gather those and we'll make a determination based on this. Since this is not proposing the action, it's actually reducing that, we will be went ahead and just made a determination on significance. There's still an opportunity for agencies or anyone in particular to uh make comments on that, we can revise that, we didn't see any comments. So we went ahead and issued that determination on the twenty sixth, we provided notice of the determination in this public hearing in the twenty sixth. Uh today is July twenty sixth, which is the hearing. Um if the planning commission recommends this for approval to the city council, it will go first to a study session. And then it'll go to a legislative session where if additional public hearing will be held, at the conclusion of that, the ordinance will be voted on. So the crux of this um application is whether or not uh self-storage and mini storage facilities are consistent with the purpose and intent of the C two highway port, so. This is the actual code that provides the intent to C two highway one or so. And it states that it's to permit large-scale development, the line of highway access and visibility, for users benefit from high particular trip counts and cater to drivers of private vehicles by. Providing visible, convenient parking in a age of retail institutional office civic recreational residential leases to meet the community's needs. Uh while the priority of the zone is to emphasize vehicular access, public transportation, pedestrians and cyclists are also served dedicated cities. Uh we were initially asked by the city council to review this to make a determination on it, when you look at in your storage and many storage facilities as pertains to this. Um they're not a retail institutional office civic recreational or residential use. Uh and they don't necessarily cater to high particular trip counts, so. They don't seem to fit this pretty well, and it seemed like that was already envisioned, but it was made a additional use as opposed to straight out of that use. So we're taking this one step further and saying that these uses actually are not consistent with um the focus on intensity to seven part. Um to initiate any zoning title amendments, we are required to look at several items, in this case, uh section B here, amendments to the zoning title may be initiated by the planning commission. Upon its own motion by the city council, provided a big notice posted in public hearing itself, so in this case, the city council asks us to go ahead with this, this is what allows us to. When we have amendments, and and I apologize, this is a pretty watered-down version of this, but if you if you're really interested, the staff report is included, and it gets into all of this stuff. Um basically, we're required to review any proposal against comprehensive plans, everything that's required to be consistent with comprehensive plan. And again, the CBA, uh CBA is easy, in this case, we again, we issue that determination on significance, and that's done. Uh in this case, we looked at several goals, so goal seven, goal twelve, and several policies, which are both up to six policy five and policy six. Um goal seven asks for the city to plan for established types of qualities of landing, several heights and support community. Uh promote service efficiency and just sustainability. Essentially, we took a look at many storage facilities to determine whether the community is, if there's a community need for additional many storage facilities, we recently issued the conditional use permits. Maybe a year ago, probably not that long ago, and that that brought the grand total of many source facilities to five. Up in the city of every heights, which is a gap that's been pretty high. Um we also have a number of both private and public uh indoor storage facilities located throughout the city. Um it's hard to really make an argument that there is a community for additional storage facilities. Um goal twelve asks that the city involve the community of every heights and all local government planning and decision-making, helping develop and implement plans for the city's future. In this case, um this whole proposal came from the city council, so this was derived from the community, this was something that staff or anyone outside the city requested. Uh policy five encourages development patterns that provides uh sustainable scale daily need services within one quarter mile residential areas. Allowing for measured independence for those who cannot or choose not to drive. Uh in this case, it's again really hard to make an argument that many storage and indoor storage um are sustainable scale daily need services. Uh a lot of the C two, not all of it, is within a quarter mile residential areas, um and they're not very locked, there's no real reason to walk to an institution. Um policy six encourage compact pedestrian-oriented development patterns in neighborhoods and commercial areas, again, there's nothing really compact about the storage facility. And they're not very pedestrian marked, and they're they're mostly designed to be accessed by vehicles for obvious reasons. When revealing amendments to the zoning code. So sure, I have any notes here. Um you can review amendments to zoning code if any or all of these particular criteria apply. So in this case, criteria such a minimalist system with a comprehensive plan is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, so we just talked about how it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh change in economic, technological, land use conditions have occurred in warrant modification zoning title. Probably make an argument there to amendment is necessary to correct an error that doesn't apply in this case. An amendment is necessary to clarify the meaning potentialism or God, um and then the intention, so that doesn't apply, so again, it just has to be a useful one. Um and then it's necessary to provide for user uses that were not slated addressed, which doesn't apply there. And it's deemed necessary by the planning commissions and council, which is again, the council asked that we. Uh this section regard this particular decision criteria that you as the planning commission need to review uh the proposal against to make your determination of whether you could recommend a. Uh the first decision criteria is the development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it meets the requirements and intensive developmental code, uh we just talked about how. Uh the proposal is consistent with comprehensive plan, and we went over the uh the intent of the development of how it is inconsistent. Uh number two, uh development makes adequate provisions for open space, range, waste, streets, and other public ways, in this case, it's specifically referring to a development, since this is. It's a development that is. Uh the development adequately uh mitigates adverse environmental impacts identified during environmental review, uh that's CBA, again, we determine other from not be the additional environment. Uh the development is not harmful to the public health, safety, and welfare, and is put in the public interest, again, this the city council asked us to do this, so again, apparently, it's probably within the public interest and the public concern, thus, and we made this determination. Uh the development is not lower the level of service and transportation and for neighborhood parks facilities, this, this is a little bit longer, I cut it down, so I didn't want to read the whole thing. Um there's no impact to level of service uh by not allowing these storage facilities with. And number six, the area location and features plan proposed for dedication or direct result of the development proposed, this isn't about the proposal, there's not dedication associated with that necessarily. Uh staff recommendation is move to approve and adopt resolution uh PC twenty twenty three dash zero one seven, which is a separate resolution, basically. Saying that the planning commission does recommend this to the city council, so that's why there's two different. Uh and that certainly stopped for explanation, recommending the approval of the proposed amendments to every heights means put seventeen point oh five oh three oh, and every heights means put seventeen ten oh four out. And forwarding the documents. Speaking. Uh and with that, do you have any feedback?
Well, I was to say, great job, Zach, presentation somewhere, I was just something with two things. People is me, yeah.
So for some reason, maybe. What are we doing?
You, so I just wanted to bring up the zoning man because. I would have to draw your attention to the red, which is the commercial zones, but posing to eliminate many storage, which is essentially. Uh along the US two corridor, deeper on the south side. Uh but the reason that the staff is recommending that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and and the intent of the code. Is because we are uh identifying that indoor and outdoor storage would still be allowed. But it would be allowed in all of the light and the dark gray areas, which is. Pan out a little bit and see uh where all that. Light brain, dark gray, so we do have actually the more industrialism and we do commercials in. And uh indoor and outdoor storage tends to be on our trees, because they have buildings with. In this, they have storage areas, etc. And so this is another reason why I stacked it up in the D. That's the. Like we should recommend approval of this, because we do have two zones. Seated very well to enter. We have to continue to facilitate that in the city.
And I'm sorry, I was gonna mention that we we have a hundred and thirty acres of vacant. So there's more than that for. To accommodate the existing those.
We've already. At max, what you say in terms of.
Uh that that was just me saying that I'm trying to determine whether there's a community need for more.
Right.
Uh there is no max, you can have as many as you want, there's no limit of that, I'm just saying, for the size of our town, having five, this is.
Two people, it's just outside of the town.
That's true, yeah, I I'm just looking internally, but yeah, um don't worry, if you look just outside, it answers to.
The property on the corner of Craig and Highway two, some of the storage containers.
Yes.
The kind of. So what happens to them if, you know, those people are using the land, that but that property or that is supposedly. Does we have the ability to bring and type up, is as soon as they want change to use, or does it automatically disappear and they can live on growth?
Well, that use didn't get a condition, they just set up shop.
Right, yeah.
So what the non-conform provisions of the new heights code in K. Is the um a piece uh gets non-conforming rights, which in the law, for instance, not very. When it's been legally established, and the non-conformity section of the code contains a couple of stop thoughts. For how long can these can be reestablished? Um under what circumstances that can be reestablished? As well as some cases, and so for example, non-conforming residential systems. Have no, they have no time that they come from me in an industrial area with forever. Provided that they continue to be used as well as since it's a new.
So we're not what it seems that. But that would be.
If we come back to the big liability. From in. And of those only that's. Who will never. But yeah, it's not able to continue to operate.
Would if they did create a city of.
Then I think when you use section, do you want to pull that out?
Oh.
Actually, it has some limited provisions to allow for modifications and some senses, additions or changes. Um but it does notice that I believe that they can't go into another piece of property, so someone can buy a vacant. Five acres next door and say. I'm understanding.
Yes. But in general, the expansion is what triggers that, you you can exist as long, there are, we are, code doesn't provide any. Timeframes for existing uses, as long as we maintain it, uh an advantage, which isn't typically here. Um so it's just about expansion.
But I'm really pushing. Let's see, we do a rule in trial. So she's a glass.
In the new station?
Yes. Would they automatically have to follow that, but we should see when this was outside of town, you know? Obviously.
Same rule, if they are legally permitted, and if there's something that's claimed, then they get on. But but that's. That would be an assumption that it would get some, but if there's, like, there's. A mini storage, uh. So here, here's the hard part, the mini storages that everybody's thinking of, like on Eastern Tenor, so the city's relevant, so whenever it may be. But let's pretend that there wasn't right there that we could, and it's um that isn't to say that we wouldn't, when we. When we annexed it, we're referred by state law to apply news, and we probably would apply the sound most closest to the use that's there, so in this case, we've been telling. Instead of.
So a a really good example of of that in exing a use that would be an issue with us is uh Sakani, the entire Sakani neighborhood. Uh it was platted and beginning development prior to annexation, but as you can see, it's within our sound font tool. So if it was in the city of every heights at the time, uh it would have not have been allowed to go in, simply because of that, but since um it was legally platted and established for residential uses prior to annexation. Um they were allowed to develop the entire. Are there any additional questions?
We, do you have any of the? We so know. Would you guys leave, obviously, the big sense? In terms of everything else in the city? Um. I would definitely wish it would resist and stop the city, especially if the residents, so the asking for this, as the council asking for this, still can make that decision.
I would agree with that.
Um you, when you add to the motion to pass the uh resolution, she conceded two to two last year and settled. Let's move. So second thought? Second. All those in favor?
Alright.
The motion to uh press resolution, PC two 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 second team, passed.
Thank you.
Well. Those even. That's all.
It is. Yes, this is really.
We don't have any action items to. So we'll move on to our show. If you have applicants for baking, many commission seats, and we have uh, I mean, if you have any other opportunities for.
Now.
Hey, um I'll open yourself if anybody wants to, especially in style, and we'll um. You know, I've got new operations, so. Um I don't think you have anything. Uh I'll just say I've known their love for a while, and. Good person, the diversity is always good on this mission, so just such a streaming one, yes, you know, things then. And I would like to see you with that in a way, actually. So. I already know about. I like you are. Yeah?
Just to get a smell. Alright, um I'm currently an assistant manager over at the heat of Northport. Uh I also have a part-time job at Wiz indeed, uh it will hurt you with a mark on. I've been in this area, it's worked the every heights Walmart here as well for nine years, um I moved out here two thousand and seven, and I need to. Town is gonna blow up, and it's, it is expanding, so um uh. Yeah.
I think when it would be a great addition, if we can have it, just diversity, um we definitely use, I hope that the council will. That would be. You know, mission in there. It's not very recent.
When you could forward the application materials. The next meeting. Or the application.
Uh so there is a meaning.
So we'll be the second.
So we can forward it with everything. As the council, we take action.
Well, I think.
Um. Let's just say that, yeah, no, it was like you said, the. Or so the council actually, it's like actually. Study session. Any questions? I'm concerned.
You want, you want to read, because this guy.
Yeah, I do enjoy reading, so.
I mean, if it's, it's on my next one to reading. That's just, I mean, it's it's. Okay, I thought we should put two different maybe we would actually.
Uh well, sorry, I understand, but we don't have.
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying. Sorry.
Uh no, we wouldn't have the media. And this is about the really. Willing to do so, we. Or aligning. So he's in second.
But they're gonna look at see you next soon on a special session, and we'll see you. So. Uh so something else about. Let's move on to this uh means to be in the gender, I know this is a bit deep, and they'll um. We had the pledge of allegiance on in our. Meaning everyone, we have this implication everyone. We've never done that in location in five years, I believe, this um. And I obviously bring courage to the visions is not a necessary act in Sweden, so I would never take a look at the sides out, future, and uh. If you have a deal, I. Studies shows to us the contents of that. Um and we have comments or.
I do have an opinion on that, uh in terms of the indication, and most of you all know that I passed your transition to say. Uh Spokane. Uh, of Spokane. You know, uh, but I think it's, I think the indication is important, uh, particularly when you're looking at, uh, making plans for a city, uh. As a theologian, I look at the aspect of inviting, uh, God's presence into the meeting, because we as humans don't know what we're, we don't always know, and we don't always make the right decision. And so, uh, having that is giving space, uh, for God to help us make the right decision from the direction of the city. And that's what, um, I mean, the etymology of the education was in the fourteenth century, uh, but then, of course, in the first century, uh, it was the Greek, the Greek word for that implication is petition, which actually is our English word for an appeal. You go to court, you make an appeal before a judge. And so I think from that standpoint that it's important for us, uh, to have that so that we know that we are making the right decision for the city. And, uh, because I am who I am, uh, there's a passing description in Jeremiah twenty nine and seven that says, receive the welfare of the city. Uh, if the city goes well, if it goes well with the city, it will go well. And so that's my premise, uh, in terms of keeping the education. Doesn't have to be a long thing, but, uh, I think as we give, uh, to the landlord or to the lord of the land, uh, I think that it would, uh, help us to prosper as a city.
Done, yeah. The first, sure, I, I was gonna ask, what do we, I haven't said, you know, on the city council meeting, do they do either or both, uh, so they need to play. Was it a quick approach or just sounded a little bit.
Meetings turn out. So they're moving the potential, it's gonna go to, so they look to communicate to us. Never know how to get an invitation. Or others.
Yeah, sorry, I, yeah, I don't, well, like you said, it's been on this again for five years, if anything's happened.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we we have talked about is to change, uh, the, because there's, there's actually several items on here that we never have, like, action items. Because normally actions taken care of during public care, or, um, there, we do a workshop, it's more of a you know, recommendation, yeah, we should, we should work on this, they're coming in, this is a, this is a.
The other process been the same since I've been, this is never changed.
Yeah.
So there's is, is a little bit, um, the reason for saying that they have consent agenda, those, uh, starting by expenditures, that is, easily. Um, action items. Uh, they are asked to do, keep the, um, a legislative decision, so they're discussing, you know, the those take action to forward them, like, we're just twenty four, which is. Um. Of course, they have public friends, so you do similarly, we did that at council courses, but. So they're covered on it, um. Workshops, they, they do a guy, so. So session. To discuss that, so there's no matter. On an agenda and say, or. So that's, that's a great, I need to receive that.
So you're saying we could take out the action?
Um, yeah, we've used action as for, um, the most recent, we've, we've, uh, given the vote for justice instead of absence, uh, absence as an action item. Um, but it's your agenda, so you can go whatever.
I just like, well, we, you know, you're saying, because you have seen multiple aspects, it would be, um, it was a waste of time, just doing that, I would rather you go out. So the symptom that like action items, we can put into another section. Right, if it's just how, just in the absence, maybe we've got to another way of this.
I mean, you could say a workshop and there's a second motion, yeah.
So you can say the whole, she, she, she.
Um.
The presentations are usually reserved, they're like an outside party coming in, giving a presentation, so that's the difference.
Uh, we don't see that. I say, we'll see the action, uh, soon, you know, I can see where we can split that under the workshops, um. Sure. Uh. Done, I mean, I would have to say.
Yeah, so. I, I kind of.
I'm saying, you know, that's. Uh. Them. No, that was like twenty five. You, I like. Personally. The occasion we are appropriate. So. And this is, we should, if they're right. So. So this is. So I kind of look at this. Okay. So that's. So that comes on. So we won't see that. Specifically. I'm not pushing to do so, I'm not lasting, so I don't think, I don't think, and the purpose of it doesn't have a combination, I just want to serve the city. It's the end goal. But I also, like you said, global diversity, so that first city is accepting of the people's beliefs and practice that, I would see it. I would like to take the location out, but I am also okay with, we share with folks around the city, we're not too.
Um.
Including that, towards the beginning, that they can want to be, so they can commission with that communication, then so be it at that time. And if nobody else wants to, then that's their time as well, and we're not really very satisfied yet, because it's the system, when we get there.
So my, so my thing is, and we don't have to draw the side, uh. But it's like, um, as an educator. When we did, uh, public ceremonies, we would all, uh, always, uh, get, get honored to Native Americans and the Latin, that is, they, right? And there's people in the accent, not necessarily agree with that, but because we wanted to honor land of the Native Americans. We made sure that it honors to that, and I'm simply, uh, just saying that our thoughts and our understanding uh, can be flawed, can, uh, not necessarily, uh, in, in terms of how the city moves forward, I think as a commission, uh, he helped, right, uh. I think my doctoral program, so I don't think I'm as smart as you know, uh, but it doesn't matter what our educational backgrounds are, I think that it's just important, and I think whoever founded the city founded on those principles in terms of, uh, invitation and inviting, uh, got into the, into the conversation, uh. And that's where I think it's important, certainly in five to ten seconds, five to ten seconds. Doesn't really do anything, but, uh, it can do something supernatural, uh, but that's just my position, so. You know, it doesn't take a long time to, to say, Lord, eat your health and guide our decision-making.
If I could maybe try and go through this and maybe make some practical suggestions, I think the dilemma, uh, that I'm hearing is that it's been on the agenda for years, um, and it's, it's never been utilized, it it's, um, can take many forms, everything from someone within the group speaking, um, organizations I belong to in the past have actually brought in a guest to do the invocation. And so when I ran the neighborhood program for the city of Spokane, for over three, ten years, um, that was part of, so with the neighborhood meetings was, you know, inviting someone of different backgrounds at the beginning of the meeting, and the different person neighborhoods who were going into um, to come into speaking, and so that's the practical element of this, it's on your agenda and I'm speaking to it, and so um, I think that's what I'm hearing is there's these things on the agenda that we're, we're not doing, not practicing, it's not, it's not, um, it's not being utilized as part of the agenda, and it's a practical manner, or should it be moved? I hear also this idea that there is a place, um, to potentially use some time in order to, um, identify with different cultures and different religions. I guess the question is, what would be the most practical way to do that? So is it maybe, um, if, if it's, the issue is, is it going to be used for an ordinance is the worst question. And if it is going to be used, how will it be used so that it's an effective contributing part of the religion? So one option that I heard was moving the commissioner reports to, which is a great idea, that's what the council is. Reports at the beginning of the meeting, and in any individual person who wanted to speak one, or, um, suggest something they could do that. Another alternative simply might be a moment of silence, or call it a moment of recognition. And allow each person who's within the commission or the audience, if there were seconds to pause and do it as a, as a moment of acknowledgement of like, and you re-describe it. The other option would be to discuss actually using and the certification, so someone's appointed, somebody's invited and, and somebody speaks at every meeting, which is, you know, at this point is a short term, you know, two times, and because we're trying to get through a particular project that otherwise would be, so unfortunately. You know, speak or say something, whether it's an acknowledgement of our location than traditional, um, rooms, you know, some of the tribes, or it's the rotation, um, so it keeps a different face, but I think there's a couple of different options, but first of all, do you want to keep the time on that? And secondly, if you do, what do you want to do with it? So how do you, how do you add value to the agenda instead of having something that's simply there and is never exercised? Is that a good summary? Okay.
We've never used it, there was a deal with our views, um. I've watched this commission, we use, you know, residents of the city, right, and you just watch the residents of the city and they're going with the city council almost all the time. Can you think, machine was thinking about? Uh, with structure positioning, I just, I live out of separate future, so we're not having that on island, or you know, having to worry about scheduling the speaking staff. I feel moving the commission, it's, uh, uh, right after the vote, uh, allowing somebody to do that at a time, then it's never worth it. It is still satisfied, and hopefully, it's a form in which you not only mediate and invite, um, whether you want to, to decide a, a decision in the city, but it also allows somebody of my mind said to just focus the business of the city. Okay, there, that's, it's missing. And that I'll have to, as a chair, make sure we have some. They should have seen. Uh, what I'm doing. And open now. The majority, I feel, I was frozen, so just go with that. I mean, it's easy to say we all agree on the budget, we can subtract. So we all agree and take that out. Um. The, uh, action items. And thirty nine, with different ages, it's a panel as well. It's just realistic, whether we are.
And ultimately, it's, it's it's up to persons leading, and, and your point that we've never done in five years, that we've never had the never had a makeup like this, or, or you just had people who never spoke up about it, they just went. Majority, and that's all, finally, everybody's you know, can do what they feel is right for them. So it it ultimately, you run, so, uh, we both, but ultimately, you run it, uh. It's not gonna stop me from doing what I do normally anyway, uh, but I just thought that, that, you know, record for me, uh, that I communicated, assessed the importance and the value of invoking the presence of.
I just had one of the thoughts, I mean, we're just, I was in California. At the beginning, what happened, most of the time, it was usually pastor captains, uh, pastors church and these other ones, occasionally we did, especially for reasons. But as time went on. So we can't sure that it it's happened less and less, and it's hard to have some issue, six, five days, maybe a year, or half, or a city, and, you know, we have three different churches for. What's the, I don't know, I don't know. Some lesson, which is like, that's for you. So. And I, I need to say it like that, you know. So we're gonna need someone to. Who's certainly. Some, sure, like, sure, she needs, all this, right? Such a lot, you know.
Um, can you say, so, 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 um. If you're, you're advocating for keeping the invitation, um, what were your thoughts, where this is to the opportunity to say something that's, is, mission?
Uh, it doesn't, I mean. I don't, I don't mind, uh, doing that either, I didn't. So. Let me clarify, when I see, coming from the background that I've come from, when I see an invitation, it's a, it's a prayer. You don't have to invite anybody, in a sense of, in my background, uh, there's a person who's a pastor in the room, it always defaults to that person to, to open up to me. Now, it's new to me that, uh, individuals that find somebody to do, find somebody that, I didn't, I didn't know that, and if if I was in your shoes, uh, then that would be the issue, be to find somebody. But in your shoes, that's difficult for you to have to do that based on your, uh, belief system. And, uh, but it doesn't, I mean, if I get it in the commission's report in terms of, uh, what that looks like, I don't know what that looks like, uh, in terms of that, but I know, I don't have the issue with that, but.
Then I guess the second clear question is, um, you know, you spoke, you were keeping in patient, what in your mind?
Just, oh, just opening up, uh, and opening up the medium, uh, invoking God's presence to help us make the right decision as with moving through, uh, these agenda idols and things like that, uh. Ultimately, humanity, uh, we have a lot of. We have a lot of issues in our own mind, and so my thing is to. Invitation is to help that, help guide our decisions, help make our decisions that's going to prosper the city. So on so forth, so that's, that's my intention, my thinking in regard uh to keeping the invitation. So, but. I understand we live in a, uh, not live in a monotheistic world, we have a polytheistic world, so it's just. Just depends on who's leading. Then so. In essence, if you have somebody who is a believer. Advocate. You have somebody who does not ascribe to any type of deity to the world, or have been actually very, it's not. So, but that's. That's your decision, that's, it's not.
Um, so it just says verification, then the neighborhood teams would have. Space to do that, but um it was only permission to do, but in the past, but then implementing. Presentation, individuals that would do that, so this, is that what you also have going on when it's communication? On your side, that's a many.
Well. The, the idea is, is that, and I don't know if that's a conflict interest with me, but I'm saying that it doesn't. Doesn't make any sense to have to call someone in and for somebody to drive up here. Five to ten seconds to, to say something, to then go back out. When I'm here and, and can do that, uh. You know, on multiple city things in Spokane, I lived in there, lived in Spokane. I did things like that, but yeah, I understand that. People have a different view. Seem aware of that, but again, like I said, I just need to. Saying that, this is what I believe is, is valuable and necessary.
Let's move the easy ones out of the way real quick. Action items, special legends, well, we're pretty good, but. We'll definitely change this. Regardless of the invitation decision, I would like to remove the commission.
Can I, can I ask this, but is it, and you said it. What's the purpose of removing the uh the pledge of allegiance? I mean, I'm a veteran of the United States, which, that's fine, but also I'm African American, and I also understand. The complexities that go along with United States of America and me being black, I totally understand that, but. What's the reason for, is it, is it a time element, or is it, is it the statement, one nation under God, or?
No, no, to be, to be fair, this, this, it, it comes out of during COVID, you know, I was on Zoom. It was just common like times that often, so you would deal with this delay always. And we're still doing the high board meeting, I know in future, but the times I'm not here, so it's gonna be resumed. So on our last meeting. Was one of the previous, as two meetings, they just got found a casualty as a joke because of that. And then Heather mentioned that city council, I'll take it away from the study groups, and so just prompted the discussion, right? Because if it's not a fire, it's getting fire, we do, right? I served in the army, like, I, I don't feel any need to be the pleasure of the regions to show my reach to the non states, that, that is certain. Just removing it and then avoid that, that delay issue from Zoom in the future, it just was. I'm always like, the majority rules, right, so if anybody wants to keep it, I'm fine, either way, but the feedback I was getting was everybody. Oh, no, your problem.
Uh, so I, I do have a question with, with the council, so when they do, when they do their legislative sessions. And is that something that, any public members were there, are invited to join in and participate at the same time, or?
Um, both, both study session and another session again to the public, so I'm going to come into this room and. Zoom is also, so that if someone were to participate by telephone, like, like this, from that standpoint, I know something.
When they, when they do the pledge. Yeah, this, yes, it's just the audience stand up and participate, when, or they invited to.
Oh, not on Zoom. Yeah, in the room, yeah, everyone in the.
What, the, one of the just pieces of background, trying to back down those questions, I think that everybody has seen them. So. Library for association cities in Washington. So it's, what it does is it gives instructions to each agency.
I personally, it, it doesn't bother me the way, it's just a practical science, because Zoom aspect really causes this problem. It's just a delay, you start having. When they're gonna start it, it's, you know, it just becomes.
Actually find myself leaning back towards. Potentially keeping it. Moving out of a session that we have invited the public to participate in, like.
They're, they're invited to everyone. Because we have that public clinic where they're, right, so every meeting, they're invited, I mean, I think we have to buy more, have it like this.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we have talked with the. Um, provide this information to the meeting, plan the mission, try and all of you. Very communication. It's because you.
Andre, how did you feel about the pledge of allegiance, and you wanted to keep it or do you keep it?
In, in that, it's, it's uh. I know, I just simply know that times change. But, you know. Oh, you know, I, again, I'm, sometimes there's this tension between uh. Between what America stands for and then the treatment of people like me, right? But since I served, you know, I'm like, hey, and I have family to serve, and so I value that, but. I will yield uh on that to, to the, but I do think like uh. That if we're, you know, in that public space or whatever, which these are public uh hearings, then. Should, should offer that. I'm just saying.
So, so what I'm hearing though, is like, would you kind of like to keep it uh, dummy? And I would write you on the student, which is, you know, take it out. I would save in, but leave it in at that point, if we don't have, you know, just leave that in. We all are okay with me being commercially first, so after work, regardless of the location solution. Well, that was deep in the uh, in COVID days, I'll go back to, it was our council, we had. A group of ten, we almost always had at least five ships of them in the on, super happy, there should be like her. And we had one or two that. Couldn't keep pace with the rest of the room. But yeah, so that I, that's my thing, since Zoom is a system of hybrid. We did our first two meetings, I thought, this is. So, so we'll leave that in for now, um. I would like to bring this back, definitely have not on both commissions, that way we can get it in both parties, um, and see that that going forward. And the invitation, when those, the one that we're gonna have most. Just few moments, so right now, but your position, your position.
I, I, I understand everything Andre said and agree. But like, yeah, we're, we, we live in a pluralistic society, and again. Depending on the circumstances, who's, who's leading. It seems like we raised the odds, somebody else is gonna be offended. You've got something like that, you just don't wanna go there. It, it hasn't been being done. Our elected city council is not. And they, in my, my mind, most closely represent, I think, everything that the populace thinks. So if they're not doing it, it's a reflection of what the populace we serve. Then, then I think in that regard, it makes sense for us to mirror what they're doing. But absolutely, you, you need all the time, we need all the help to get, um, making these decisions. And I guess, I guess then it makes it incumbent on us as individuals to see that.
I am going to make a notion based on that, then that we need the commission reports, I feel like gonna take a mutation out of further readings. And uh. Just move forward with that from this point in time. Um, if you're gonna fund it up in the future, Andre, we have. To the commissioners and stuff like that, I mean, it's a bit of having a competition to where it loses.
Just to clarify, I wanted action items from the commissioner and staff. To item. Or behind the bottom.
Yes, I guess. Just, I'm gonna make that, uh, we should, we should, that puts up, so you have action items and invitation. That's how we'll have a big construction. That said, that's the conditions.
I have to ask a silly question, what are the commission reports, who, who assigns them?
So, we, we've always, and I don't know if this is historically what it's supposed to be. But what we have always used that time period for is just bringing that stuff. So, um. For the ever, am I gonna use that time? A couple of times I brought up, I mean, it was a, bushes and stuff like, can you turn over on that? April in the garden, H and D, so just followed up on that time period. But I've also seen other issues in the past, um, when they break the industry office and get KFC and everything down there. Just, you know, expressing how it made the higher tier border look better, and that was a nice thing, we, we should encourage our businesses to do that. It, it's just always been that, or to, whatever we're even gonna have, add to that meeting and just talk about your position and. I don't know if that's what it is, actually, that's a place to be.
You're absolutely right, it can be whatever you want, I mean, but, and. There is also an opportunity for you to not got any community, one that goes in it. You're invited to. Or association, Washington cities. So it's, it's, it's pretty open. Transportation, and so those things. If you go to conference.
I, I have a question. So what is being built next to, like, you know where the mod pizza and Jersey Mike's is? And so what is that, west of that, there's those two lots, I know they're building a, a retail space, but then. There's a space right in between the new retail space that the building is there and in the mod. I was wondering what was being built there.
Yeah, that, it's, so the multi-car is gonna be there.
I think it's occupational, is it occupational?
Cause the occupational is on the. The urgent care, so there's gonna be another urgent care, right? Oh, oh, okay.
And that's in cities.
Yeah, our, our, actually, your height's kind of a great here, so everything uh to the. So that's why we're guessing and not having an actual.
Well, we do know it because we get.
Well, that's true, we, we did hear. My understanding is they are, but again, that's the city. Supposed to be on the south side of Highway Two.
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to be, okay, okay, I won't get excited, I'm tired of driving the post walls.
No, you're gonna say, ooh, it's over in the city. We want you to be on the other side.
Yeah, we're presenting still in the, the gas station right over there. On our third and two, that's the room where that's. Yeah, that's the room we've been spread.
I'm always thinking about.
You got this map of right now, I'm gonna say I noticed more and more people using this back route to travel the city. So I don't know if that's, is, is it more already connecting to it or not, but it's nice to see that. It's, is it more already connecting to it or not? But it's nice to see that. Two, but is there any way we can? I believe this might be a washout. They made that a U-turn lane so people would do a U-turn right there. People can see the road west. And you do a U-turn to get into the gas station on a lane right there. But what it ends up doing will stop the light from staying green and you get a back. It's a bad. I don't know if there's any way they can change the training on that. I'll just do that, but. And that's innovative.
So the, so yes, we can make a request to the washout operations, but changing the tiny. Sensitivity of the signal. This, what you're saying is the nature of me. Makes the might change soon.
Yes, if you look at like the picture, right? You have the line all the way back to your merchant name.
Oh, yes.
But you'll have three cars that do a U-turn at the very beginning and the light changes red because it takes several traffic. And they would pass up even more than we do.
Yeah, absolutely. Those are, yeah, those are.
I got. I know we just put in. Close your side now. Is it? Yeah, I'm told it was made to help save after he finished that.
It is. Uh, so you're wondering why the city pursued reliance in order to pay for it.
Right.
Um. So. Some of the projects that received sidewalk. Builds. And I wasn't curious.
Right, yeah.
Or somehow they were able to build without putting a sidewalk in. And there's not about the building, there is this true. To combat. Years later and get the development. So um. The other part is the city has in its long term. It's. That we want to have a network of sidewalk on the south side and it's like multi-use path. Or something, you know, it's huge to create walk-in biking. So because there were a couple of vacant lots between some of the last. But the city saw the single and grants up. It was a simple project. See different brands from. The original transportation was. States. We involve transportation. That's why they, they put it in. And it, it was a lengthy process. We stay, we negotiate with those system developers to be paid easements to defer the same thing so that we can. You know, begin filling those gaps. But you're right, every development. If, if he can go further to the east. Um, all of the new developments. Okay, it shows it to work. So when you drive down it, you'll see all the good ones.
Right, yeah. No, and I, I just, I. I'm just verifying about that. Should that's been interesting stuff around the same time. Things just got. Followed up. So good work. The other, yeah. Oh, no, I just, it's one of those, it's just kind of. So many people on foot these days. Since people are on highway. Fill in those gaps as well.
Well, so this is what I put in since you had mentioned about building.
Right.
No. My point is. Oh, but you know, when I think about this before, and, and it's really important, we revisited this. Speaking about the. It is a point in their future and we should be thinking we should do that. You know, some, some travel. Communities thinking wants those questions. Um, which is that, you know, this city has been here since nineteen fifty five. This city, while we're in some. Disaster, I mean, disaster. And so what do we have with? You know, the, the tenure of the people. System. So it's hard to even make sure that. That we keep that, we bring that land. It's continuing to be. Was it learning? It's kind of the transportation job. And you're gonna see it was. There's a. Same season to use the gas system. So it gives us a very bad. Next to keep going in here, you'll be able to follow and see. After we think this. Yeah, we just. Keep building, building. Uh, mountain. And creating bowling. Bowling is to be slower. Spins. Looking wherever it is. And it's important to them to use that.
So.
Good question. Little show and.
Yeah. There's something with this. Like. Five minutes, it's just very.
Well, I like to say, you know, next time you're driving through the city and then we can. See. Work. So. Multi-use pack will continue on the north side in the. We talked about four, we need to six. Also, it's a. Be. Just to. Well, essentially extended for. Mine. Down used to go up. So I was there. You know, it's the residential. Well, I was so. I was. Where yesterday. Was Robbie. Day. Since I came down six.
With James.
Yeah.
Because there is, you know, Facebook.
No, there's a, there's a woman who is, I think, in that. Over sixty-five, maybe, I see her or probably on at least a weekly basis. Winter, fall, spring, summer. With Walker. Make it all the way down to that bus stop with. The lost.
Isn't he? Hopefully. There will be more of us stops on the mountain. Stops on the side. Next year.
Should we? You know, so.
Uh, well, I wanted to give you guys an update on the sunrise of intersection crossing. Uh, we were supposed to bring that to a public. Hearing last. Meaning that got canceled. Um, they have, what they request an extension to the first week of August. They've requested an extension. Yeah, indefinitely at this point. Uh, so we're gonna reach out to talk to them about what's going on. Uh, but just to give you a heads up, as of right now, it's not on our schedule, but once we know when and if. Write any feedback. Um, since we have the map up, I can show you some fun projects that we got going on in the city. Um. One is right here, actually. We do have an open building application for the development of that site uh for Idaho Central Freddie Union.
We have a lot.
That is.
Hazelwood Highway two there right next to Hazelwood Square, which has the man shop.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, that's the theater.
Yeah, so this is the theater. This is the, the man shop and there's a couple. So this will go right here. Oh, uh, with access on Hazelwood Highway two. Uh, let's see.
Yeah. When they start moving that construction. How is it gonna impact that?
On feature?
Yeah. When we do that construction on.
There will be ten then he's regretting.
Yes.
Well, it'll start next week.
But I agree that's gonna be happening.
That's the building application is currently in review in our office. Uh, so. Based on, every department has to do, your people's gotta do a review for all those, you know, it's up. My review, they've got first comments on it, fires looking at it. So it's hard to say because sometimes like one little thing can add four or five months. So I don't like putting dates on those. But it's an active review. We've received, I'm not gonna tell you about stuff that we haven't received some models yet because a lot of that will come in. We'll get, hey, can I do this? And then it never. So. I don't want to get any. For fun. Uh, Mountain View Gymnastics, which is currently located. Sorry, I'm trying to be really soft with this because it's not liking the way. Uh, Mountain View Gymnastics, they've been uh developing for almost two years now. Uh, but we're at the point where I'm leaving right here. Since it's on Russell thirteen Avenue. Um, they. Yeah, behind. Uh, they've done improvements to the sites, new landscaping, parking lots, interior stuffs that have been up there. Um, we're expecting them to open here in the next few weeks. Um, if all goes well. So from a planning point, they're pretty much good together. So that's good. Uh, I don't know if we, have we talked about the. Mixed use project for. They did make it into a. Um.
It's for sale. Shovel ready to. If you wanna buy it.
Well, I mean, they have their.
They've got a. A lot to do. That's like, they, they just, we just did an adjustment on the uh persons here. That's why. I mean, we're finding it, but they're at this. So this is where this mixed use project is gonna go. So you're gonna have some commercial space along twelve and ten with some units above and then internally there will be some apartments. Um, check out that journal. This is our, does have a mockup of them. They actually look really cool. We did a lot of design on them. Uh, they're one of the first projects that really implemented the design aspects of our new diversion. So maybe. So, uh, yeah, they, we're excited for that project to get going. Um, it's currently an active view. Yeah, since we're here. Uh, so some of you may have heard or seen. Facebook things, notifications, all sorts of stuff about bond measures relating to the library. And the uh, and fire station. This is the proposed site of the new fire station. Which is on your twelve and Garfield's big building. Uh, initially the uh fire would move in here, followed by uh four parts of the rest of this actually. Uh, but it's, it's a really big structure. It's, we drive by it. It's completely empty right now. Uh, but that's where they're moving. Uh, the access is really good. You got a control. Intersection on Garfield Highway two. Firehouse.
They actually don't. Double plants. Uh, yeah, well, it just. They're trying to acquire it and figure that.
Um, so yes, that's unvalid initially, which we can't speak for. But. These are questions to the website about that in the city. Um, has that required? To see.
Yeah, sure. Just when you know, the symphony have the right seal thing. That's kind of fun. Getting there, wander around knowing that this was something that was coming.
It's a nice.
It is. It's a really.
Yeah. Yeah, and events and.
It gives a box.
Yeah, they, they did. They had a bunch of boxes. I mean, filled up. So the fire department that's down from there is going to be moving for this.
That's, that's district ten.
Oh, okay. And then the police department is. In there as well, as well as.
That's like a, a, a second base.
Second.
Totally accessible. Yeah, in a lot of ways, as in according to the fire station.
It's going inside there. It's. Um, to give you an update, we went over, we did a public hearing, went over this uh about a month ago, which was the city in May expansion. Uh, the reason did go through a city council. Uh, we have the request for their condition. So for mine, they're required to do one of those conditional use permits and issue stuff like that. Uh, that will be on. On Tuesday morning right here. Uh, so once that is done, uh, we're pretty much, it's an end to the hearing. So that's just an update on the project that we worked on. Um.
I'm just.
I, I. Nope, I freaked out about last week. I booked a hearing in a room. I didn't know for sure and then I didn't have bill. Uh, but we're all good to go. Um. So on the residential side of things. Highland Village is being built out right now. Yeah, so we're seeing, uh, we see a lot of work there. This was recently subdivided. We pushed this during about a month and a half ago. So all these lots are new. Uh, they've been out there, but now. This is the sunset private. There. Uh, Crosspoint is cleaning. So the Crosspoint Plaza, which is a binding site plan, which is essentially a subdivision for commercial and industrial properties. Just a fancy way to see it. Uh, well, there's some other things associated, but generally speaking, it's right here. They want to add some additional lots down here. Uh, so we have an application for them to add some additional plots. Uh, but we've been going back. There are. Uh. Um, tradition west is building out a simple family. You probably have seen that in the. America. This is a long. Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's like right here. Sorry. My bad. He's over there somewhere. I don't know. There's only. Okay. Smalls then. Uh, the, what do we got? The last one here, Eight and Z Rentals. Everyone should know about that. You should drive by all the time. Uh, so we're still working on that with finalizing the items, but the last one I wanted to talk to you guys about the. Is we're working on uh what's uh interior tenant improvement. So uh this structure here. Uh, which the easiest way to think about it is it's where the dominoes is at. Uh, see everybody. Talking about, uh, so the um east end of that building, there's a couple suites there. It used to be uh physical therapy for like thirty seconds and now there was a couple other things there. Real seating was there. They just went to the other end. Yeah, so they're still there, but they're in a smaller suite. So that big suite is actually being developed right now uh into the West Plains. So that was, oh, see, I knew you guys. So, uh, so those are.
Way better than the, the storage.
Yes.
It's like, it's one of the biggest signs that you're in a merging or going areas. So the fact that we haven't been living, I think, that the city is just. Yes, we still have a gold golden. Hills, golden, lights, golden. No, no. No, my thought was a difficult one.
There's a brick west, which is their building facility right outside of. Um and then no, I actually bruised most of their bearing in the very heights, you know, we talked about it a lot, but they have a facility just behind you. Yeah, he was, he was. Some of their cans, I can say it right now. But like, I think it's one of like seven. But yeah, that's.
So you can just drive by that way, they'll see a wide open.
If you know what you're looking for, it looks for the garage, you're like, that's the dog. Okay, um that is all I have for updates.
Okay. Uh thanks in. To information, we had an open house since that new project. Um so we talked about this before. We we began with a a plan, finished off Sixth Avenue and connected to Burton Road. And it grew into an opportunity to extend transit. All the way down. And we got seed money from us taking two million dollars, and then we applied for another grant for. Great ability, I took four million dollars. And we are in the process of talking about the project with the public, so we sent out. About eighteen hundred postcards, uh inviting everyone to that, but also we're at the community center. Which was uh the goal of the trust project and. Answering many questions about. We've danced far, which included uh the second page, which we. We got it, which is. There you go. So this introduced the projects, it included cross streets and views. Up and down the street. So you can tell the people like he did, okay, this is where I live, I'm gonna do this about the project. Um introducing concepts such as. The speed limit, fully in road, etc. Uh going to the next one, and then. We went through the artist concept, so. The city had opened with. S three earth, which is the development of the west plains for the city's. As well as ourselves, um to go through a vision and exercise. Because this corridor, which starts at corridor presently. Goes to Garfield and then becomes tenth Avenue, capable, which is also gonna go next year. Goes behind the ball, and then it eventually it'll still be in the north forty. And there, and that push will be in the city of Spokane, all the way to Flint, but eventually Spokane must have got away to. And Spokane tried to extend it through their facility and connect back to the old city, so it would be this. Complete parallel to us too. And we went through a public exercise. Giving some options about this in the screen. And this was the. Which was a liver, so in liver means is that you have rings of traffic going in opposite direction, separated by the leading. In this case, it would be a. We'd say meeting. Why is that? Well, it enhances the street, it narrows the roadway, so it encourages some travel. And it allows for additional facilities to be built into the waterway, in this case, the public. For third and alternative for biking. Was in separated, continues to happen, so you see in the writing inside, otherwise normally. Bike lanes were included. So the public really felt. That having separated bike lanes was the way to go, and you have see that as. Part of the. So this is a pretty real view. Of what it looks like out in the sixth hour, it's a bit of a great job. Uh so what we would do is keep the curb line on the north side. Resource. Uh and the existing sidewalk would be there, we would fill in missing blocks of sidewalk. On the north side. And on the south side, we would put in multi-use path, and we can work any existing sidewalk to multi-use path. By adding another five feet of. So that we have ten feet to. All the way down from the existing end of the. On six thousand. Break road, and can you uh put in a little bit, so it would include the transit stops, which are here, catch and ask. So we did have members of the community, the senior housing complex, we attended and said. People are walking every day from there. And they were. So we developed a way down to awesome. You will now see a bus stop literally on either side of. Of the city development, so the future of. Side of Sauson Street. And we will also be doing crossings. Between the bus stops, you know crossings, and they will have what's called a tangular rounded flash, which is a pedestrian. Sign with a with a pedestrian activated flasher. That will flash day and night, when activated to let drivers who listen to. If there would be a wire. Street, so. It will also, the street will be completely. Uh but it will look like. We'll have three different colors of pavement, seams all really nice.
Yeah, my personal favorite is round bean, where you're like.
Will all the cross streets be reserved, or will some of them be blocked because of all of our stuff?
All the cross streets and intersections will exist, and people drive through and take a left and go. Best. At any of those, we can. So it's not a continuous nonstop one, and it won't have breaks in it.
Okay, so maybe I'm just. So the. Will it be, how many of those intersections will be through, like, will came? Yes, still be a three intersectional.
At this point, my understanding is all interceptions will. Um what will happen, though, is because it's a median. If you're on the north side of the block, you'll have to take a right out of your driveway and go down to the intersection. But you can see. The cross streets. Uh so this was just a person at the hall, but anyways, they're getting granted. To the parcels and. Let me go back to some of the image above, one thing that uh. Was really important for the people. Was they were concerned that the city was expanding the. And this is a great visual. Wherever you see parapoles, that's our little right. So you can see how wide. Sixth Avenue already is. And we're not proposing to go be. It just because people are using it. It's still part of it. And so if you drive down there. On the south side, you're. Uh maybe there's a fence that's gonna speech down a little bit. Trees, but those are probably the right way. Uh so things we heard back from public was concerns that existing speeding and other discontinued facilities speeding, so. We're looking at um things with the traffic calming, which are mechanisms that you want to have a way to create a vision. I mentioned that to Brad, the problem is if you have to deploy a police, you're just. Uh the walkability element, because of the bus stops, it's something that I was. Those are probably the two biggest concerns. And. Really, I think that some people. Were interested to know. Was it a research or review? And I guess the last question. While it's in construction. People get to the houses, then. It could be two of them.
So from from looking at planning, thinking about sustaining planning. It would medium. So that's the city's responsibility to maintain. And and is. Does this project or, I mean. Who's who's thinking about that, I mean, are they budgeting for that, thinking about what agency is gonna maintain that sprinklers and all that kind of stuff? It seems like we have some spaces that I I honestly suspect they're all really. Residential spaces, it's green, green spaces between roads and sidewalks, and you know, just completely ignored stuff dies and. Doctors' streets grow. So no man's land, but but.
So it's a really good question, so when you see on the north side there, we see those three trees and that. So the the joint program we should be maintaining, one thing we are talking about in the project is we. Treat play to the wind and.
Does it help the works then, or we didn't take the parks?
So the first part means does follow the. Maybe we can do this, so when we do the designing. We'll be thinking about. How to. Uh low maintenance. So what I say is if you have. Um that would be one. It's not, it's not sod, it's um it's actually a lot with. Some corals, some shrubs, some trees. So we'll be talking about some.
And and particularly too, in in view of our current water restrictions. Is that maybe a good candidate for something like replant water irrigation as opposed to city potable?
That's something we talked about as well.
So they.
This is the closest location that we can. It's at.
That the one that's right where Garfield ends, right there, that's that's the city.
That's the city. So it's only. So we have talked about it. But I don't. Extended. It's actually. Like, so every type of wine and street.
Well, I've seen, I've seen places where the sprinkler heads are purple. I think it's. Well, right, I think, and I don't know how many people are aware, don't don't let your kid or your dog drink. The purple sprinkler head water, cause it's not pulling.
Actually, in City Railway, it's is. Technically, it's an interesting name, also technically. If you want to hear the waste regulation. Talk about if you wanna be impressed with high-tech and where it says.
Anybody could do anything. And so. Probably actually better than that. Right, yeah, no, no, they, but they've made the exact same statement of, oh, yeah, this is good enough.
So. It doesn't. It does, okay.
That might be future, though, I need to. This isn't, this isn't. Uh so this is official.
No, I mean, oh, absolutely, that that's a great idea, this is probably.
Charles don't get all the.
You can kind of see what's left of that, here, he comes from uh. To the castle facility. So if you try. Like kind of this area here is where a lot of them sold. And this is that, I'm sorry for those that didn't know, the whole bar concept you're talking about, it's right here, you can see that.
You can see the median. Um so we'll be working through the design. Um but it pretty well, in saying. So designs for the. So. Really um excited to. I mean, it seems great. And enjoying. The US two inch. And they're gonna, so this will be kind of very. So they had a big. They'll be doing a couple of organizations. It's gonna be. Um and we're communicating. Uh we're in the middle of. Great season right now, so, oh, we did get another. Uh so if you go into a bird in US two, we just got a. To resurface.
Just, just. I I I'm just wondering that when we start doing that.
Well, definitely great ability. We probably can. Then they come back a day or two later. Um so we did get that, that was just a warning to us, we're super excited. So one of our goals is to start. We also are giving money. Some additional money for people to. And we haven't heard that. Well, I distinctly remember when we had other planning commission. I keep a couple of commissioners dated just you're more, more likely to be in. Uh, and a group or setting where somebody here to overhear them saying, I wonder what's going on. And you can say, well, you know.
There's no plans that you're aware. In Airway Heights. For a cost.
I would see the president's of West Plains Chamber. He's actually shopping trying to make. Into the airways. Cause there's certain number of people in a certain city. Is that all the verses start changes. So you are in.
I know, I know.
Well, well, so Perger is.
Which we don't count.
So it was kind of interesting.
Well, we didn't talk about, yes, I mean, that's further than the.
Yeah.
So that's going to leave it.
Jack just passed away too. Interesting.
Well, I mean, there's so many people that lives out. I too, we don't have access to the vehicle. So that's the block of the store. So now it's not there. It creates, you know, potential issues or access.
Well, anyway, that was, that was.
Thank you.
No cost.
Uh, I want to thank everybody for tonight. Thank you for coming. Thank you for the lengthy debate earlier. It's been a while since we had any debate. So that was nice. Just gonna say, um, look forward to working with you all in the future. And I always believe that that diversity makes us come to better decisions. Since we all have a different. I appreciate that. That said, let's go ahead. Jeremy said seven. Forty or fifty four. Seven fifty five. Thank you.